6:30 PM, public hearing to order where we will hear zoning case 2023-03-MA. G. Carter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So case 2023-03-MA, the subject property is 8099 Cornell Road. The applicant is Craig Abercrombie of Abercrombie and Associates. Craig is here tonight. The current zoning is oh planned office. It's a request for a major adjustment to a PUD. The original case that approved the Beacon Office there on Cornell was in case 2006-01-Z. Proposed use, it's an addition of 12 parking spaces at a medical office building. So the proposal is the addition of 12 new nine by 19 asphalt parking spaces and associated concrete curbing. For the case history, this same proposal was essentially approved in 2015. If you could see down here. So in the 2015 case, these spaces were never built. These two spaces that are part of tonight's case were never built. This triangle was never built, but what was built was a run of spaces along here, and they never built these spaces over here. So this was approved in 2015, but since it's expired, so that's what brings us back here Just the, as a majority, the proposed parking spaces were previously approved in a past case. Staff finds that that's a strong indicator that it's not a substantial request. The proposed spaces will pose no circulation or access management issues. I did check, there is a rule, STZR 12-4.2 that requires a 30-foot basically buffer between the property line and where the spaces start, and they meet that easily. In terms of landscaping, so there's a required boundary buffer. The proposed landscaping meets the requirements of the zoning resolution. Near the entrance of the site, it was identified that three existing trees from the original 2006 plan had died that were present, and so the applicant proposes to replace those as part of the landscape plan. In terms of outside agency comments, the Sycamore Township Fire and EMS department commented that the proposed site arrangement does not pose circulation concerns for the fire department. And then finally, we do have public comment. Dr. Donna Crummon of 8211 Cornell Road, Suite 201, on April 18th. She raised a few concerns related to email, I'll note those. Concern one that she had, the proposed location of the new parking spaces entirely eliminates the current green space and buffer zone between my office and adjacent properties surrounding 8211 Cornell Road and the parking lot of Beacon Orthopedics at 899 Cornell Road. Instead of the current view of grass and trees at my window, I'll be looking at cars less than 10 feet away. This will certainly be an eyesore. Comment two, the current swath of land in question is a downhill slope toward my back office building, which is now covered with grass and trees. If this is replaced with concrete and blacktop, the already troublesome drainage will no doubt worsen. Then comment three, although I appreciate that the proposal includes trees in a very narrow green space adjacent to the public spaces proposed, Dr. Crummon noted that she's concerned that the trees will be too close to her building and cause additional problems from shade and debris. In terms of staff comment, really only commented on comment three. An initial review of the plan, staff did note that a black gum variety of trees is sighted along the buffer area, and those will cross the property line. To remedy the concerns of the neighbor relating to the plant material crossing the property line, a condition could be considered to switch out the proposed black gums along the property line for comparable material of columnar trees that will not cross the property line, such as the crimson spire oak or the slender silhouette sweet gum. In summary, staff finds that this is not a substantial or controversial proposal. The dimensions of the parking spaces and site arrangement meet code. And staff would only propose the same condition that was present in the 2015-04-MA case, the case that was originally approved but expired, that the landscaping plan shall be compliant with Sycamore Township Road zoning resolution and shall be approved by planning zoning staff in the zoning compliance plan phase. With that, on April 3rd, the zoning commission did recommend approval, five oh vote. With that, that is all I have.
So they need the 30-foot setback from the driveway?
They do, yes. Here on the screen, I've measured it. And so the new lot will start about here, so it exceeds the 30 feet.
Is there a drainage concern, and is that something we would normally speak to or do something about if there is?
Mr. Abercrombie is here with the applicant, I would yield to his expertise related to the drainage.
Well, I might ask a question to Mr. Abercrombie.
Sure.
Go ahead.
If anyone's intending to testify tonight or speak, I'm going to swear the witness is in. So that's where we're heading up. I'll do that now for anybody intending to testify.
Okay.
Well, I would like to speak.
Sure.
Well, if you're going to speak or stay in this part of the hearing, could you please rise and raise your right hand?
Yeah.
If you're intending to speak.
Just in case.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God?
Yes.
And if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address for the record so that we have that and we can get it right in the minutes, please.
We can look at the applicant first.
Yeah, we should. We actually should. So let's start with that. Are you finished, Mr. U. Carter?
Yep.
Okay, let's start with the applicant.
Good evening. I'm Craig Abercrombie with Abercrombie and Associates. Prepared the application documents on behalf of Beacon Orthopedics. We have Amber Carson and George Nicktis here. They're with Technically Reconstructed Orthopedics, which has become Beacon, so they represent the building owner. And I worked with staff and Doug Smith at our office, was at the previous hearing that the zoning commission last month that received the five-nothing approval recommendation. We've been working with Jeff a bit. He mentioned some more columnar type of trees that wouldn't spread over the property line, which Beacon doesn't have a problem with. So we're in here just to answer any questions. I can just add a quick comment on the drainage. The new parking spaces will drain into the existing parking lot and into the storm sewer and detention system that's already in place. So if you're concerned that they're going to tilt against your building, we would never do that. It's not good engineering practice.
Downhill slope.
Yeah, we can tilt them up, yeah.
Does that mean a retaining wall is going to be put in there?
Possibly.
I mean, because it's a pretty good slope.
We would get to that once we got to the construction drawing phase. That would be reviewed by Hamilton County.
So if you have some questions, we certainly encourage them. We want to have that dialogue, but if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium and going ahead and asking those questions, that would be great.
I don't think I have anything else to add. Happy to answer questions from Dr. Crummon, and then you will.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you're not opposed to working with us on landscaping?
Correct.
Well, so my main concern is...
Help me with your name and address for the record, please.
I apologize.
That's okay.
My name is Dr. Donna Crummon. My address is 8211 Cornell Road, Suite 201, 45249. So the way the current grading is, it is a pretty sharp downhill between the reconstructive orthopedic now Beacon parking lot down to the backside of my building. There is a natural drainage flow currently back there, but the way things are now, the drainage is inadequate with all of the rain that has gone on this year. I've actually had water come up through the cement pad of my office. So, you know, what's there now has changed as years have gone by, and it's not suitable anymore. But the way the topography is, it's a good downhill slope. I don't even know how someone could park on it really, because you're going to be going down so much unless you build it up. And I'm just concerned that the drainage is going to intensify once, I don't know, what is that going to be, 20 feet or 15 feet of current grass that's made into blacktop, but it's going to severely affect the water that I'm already getting. You know, the pictures there don't really show the slope and so forth of what's going on there, but that's my concern. And of course, it's very, it's not far away, and I have windows right out the back of my office that instead of the nice green space that I have now, now my office windows open up to, it's going to be a car right out there. So however, I don't know, however you can assure me that drainage isn't affected, I would love to know.
Any comments, Jeff? I didn't know, I don't know whether it was addressed in the zoning or not.
Yeah, and I think I would yield back to what Mr. Abercrombie said. You know, currently, the rain is hitting the grass and running off towards the property. If an asphalt impervious parking lot is put there, it's going to go to a draining system and collect and collect away from the property. I think that would be my only comment then.
I guess I'd like to know a little bit more about the elevation relative there then. So is the parking...
I have the pictures I can show.
Actually, that might be helpful to see.
Do you want me to, I can pull up Google Street View and see if we can see it.
Yeah, if you could do that, I was trying to do that on my iPad here. But maybe Mr. Abercrombie could address that too, so. Are these all the same?
No, they're different, but they should be pretty good downhill slope where these are going.
Thanks, we've got it up on the screen.
So the parking spots will be going towards the building off the driveway. Do they hit the trees that are there? Were the trees being moved?
Tracy, it looks like a few. We just completed our survey mapping this week, so then we'll have our final base plan to design from. But yeah, the curb would be removed, the new asphalt added, which is 19 feet deep. Again, we're not going to tilt that toward Dr. Crummon's building. We wouldn't be allowed to.
And then there'll just be a curb around there, no need for retaining wall?
There may be a need for a small retaining wall there, but it's going to be curved, and like again I said, tilted toward the storm sewer infrastructure inside the site.
Where's the property line there? Which side of the trees?
It runs about right through here.
I'd say it's farther, maybe even a little farther back, because the spaces are 19 feet plus we've got, I mean, there's a little over 10 feet to the property line.
Yeah.
Probably around that toe of slope.
So after the curb is an additional 10 feet?
Right. And that's where the street scape, or the boundary buffer landscaping will be. Even if I wanted to tilt the paving back, which is not good engineering practice, Hamilton County Stormwater wouldn't approve it, and I won't blame them.
Do we need to enter these into the record that have been...
You're considering them.
Yeah.
Jeff, was there any, I don't see a comment on here by Stormwater.
We did not receive a comment from the Stormwater. And I would note, I did look at the 2015 record, and there was not extensive comment on the drainage from the 2015 case. At that point, it was a nine-year-old building.
It looks like that smaller tree would be gone, but the boundary buffer meets the township standard, might exceed it a little bit.
Yep.
So I'm guessing that that property line is pretty close to those bushes?
I bow on it, I agree with you.
But all the drainage will be approved by Hamilton County.
Correct, yeah.
Any other questions?
Dr. Crummon, do you own the building there, or are you a tenant?
I own the building. I'm also on the board for the condo association for the entire complex, which also has concern.
Could you step back to the microphone, please? Could you repeat that then, just so we...
Yeah, I own the building right there that's right directly in front of where the parking spaces will be, and I'm also on the board for the condo association for the entire complex there. And as a member of the board, we have concerns about the issues that I brought up.
Is there anything in the condo declaration that would affect the right to build this parking one way or another?
I don't know that answer. Since it's not on our property, I don't know that our condo association bylaws would be affected by that, but...
Oh, I'm sorry, the condominium does not extend onto this property too, then?
That's correct.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood. I thought there was a condominium affecting this property and yours.
My building is part of the condominium complex, but the Beacon Orthopedic is a separate.
It's not, okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
This goes part of that whole...
Right.
Ford, if I might, for recommendation, the only comment I would note would be for a condition, if you wanted to go with the, if you were to approve it, the columnar tree condition for that boundary buffer.
Then yeah, can I build property? Correct. I like that one real high.
I actually just looked at our plan, and Jeff can show it. Jeff, if you kind of go to the area of the new parking, there's a catch basin within the parking lot.
I have the plan set.
Right there. So we may tilt the pavement down to the curb, but then it'll still go to that catch basin, and we're not adding, we're actually taking hard surface. You know, we're taking area that would be going to the Crummon property and drain it back into our site. So yeah, there's a catch basin right in that area. Might be right by that car, by the wheel of that car. The front wheel of the car.
On the other side?
There's a drain there.
Okay.
So basically, the only one that would be draining of hers is the 10 feet grass.
Right.
Hitting on the backside of the curb.
Right. And that'll be landscape.
Anything else from the group?
Anybody else who should speak?
Anybody else who should speak? All right. Okay, very good. We will, it is 6:48. We thank you all for coming. We're going to adjourn the public hearing. We will reconvene at 7:00 PM for our regular trustee meeting. Thank you.
It's seven o'clock on Tuesday, May 2023. I'd like to call our regular trustee meeting to order and would please rise for the invocation given this evening by Mr. Rudolph.
Gracious God, hear the prayers of your people. May you remember the work that is done on this day in your name and bless us as we seek to serve and protect our citizens. Shelter us as we make decisions and grant us your wisdom. Bless each of us as we continue to work and pray together. All this we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Deeters would note that all three trustees are present. I'd like to ask for a motion for approval of minutes from April 18th, 2023 zoning public hearing and then we'll ask for a second motion for the April 18th, 2023 trustee.
Motion to approve the minutes from April 18, 2023 zoning public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Deeters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to approve the April 18th, 2023 trustee meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Deeters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Do we have any public comments this evening, Mr. Deeters?
We did not.
Okay, very good. Planning his own report. Back at you.
Thank you. We have, I have nothing to report, but we do have the resolution from the case 202303MA. I can read the resolution title if you'd like.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Resolution approving a major adjustment to a site plan for improved plan unit development for reconstructive orthopedics properties LLC at 8099 Cornell Road and dispensing with the second reading.
Motion to approve. Were we also including that condition in there as well?
Yeah, I can read that if you'd like.
You want to read that, please?
I shuffled it. The applicant shall, condition for approval, the applicant shall submit a landscaping plan compliant with the Sycamore Township zoning resolution that shall be approved by zoning department staff. Via staff review, the boundary buffer shall be amended to include a similar amount of columnar trees to match the vegetative buffer of the submitted plan originally showing the black gums.
With that condition, I'll make a motion to approve and I will second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Deeters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
With that, I have four public nuisance cases to present. First case is 8108 School Road. The type of violation was a car in the front yard. The complaint initiated was Rich Barrick. Date of complaint, that looks like a lot of typo, August 3rd of '22. It's a rental. Violation was sent August 3rd of '22. Date of last inspection was April 24th of '23. The communication with the owner representative has been unresponsive. Mr. Clark's notes is that the occupant has been not been responsive to the letter. Related to pictures, here is the car in the front yard. As you can see, with that, a resolution providing for the removal of a junk vehicle and the proper disposal and storage of impoundment of a motor vehicle for the property located at 8108 School Road, Sycamore Township, Ohio 45249 by implementing the procedures set forth in the Sycamore Township Resolution Number 2012-14 in sections statute 505.173, 505.85, and 505.871 of the Ohio Advice Code.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. So do we know that this, is this an active tag on this car or?
I don't believe it is.
Well, we don't know.
The car is parked front face out, so I think without, you know, Kevin going on the property, he wouldn't be able to see.
Okay.
It's a Dodge Durango. It's, it notes here plate not visible.
Any additional discussion? Hey, Mr. Deeters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Next case, 12, 151 Fourth Avenue. It's a junk car. The complaint initiated was a Mr. J. Paul. Date of complaint was January 30th of 2023. It's owner occupied. The letter was sent January 30th of '23. Date of last inspection was April 24th of '23. The Mr. Clark notes that the owner has been unresponsive to the letters or any attempt to contact him. Related to photos, here is the car and it's seen better days. And the plate is unknown in this case. So with that, resolution providing for the removal of junk vehicles and the proper disposal, storage, and impoundment of a motor vehicle for the property located 12151 Fourth Avenue, Sycamore Township, Ohio 45249 by implementing the procedures set forth, Sycamore Township Resolution Number 2012-14 and section statute 505.173, 505.85, and 505.871 of the Ohio Advice Code.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Jeff, can you make those, blow those up a little bit so we can?
Yes, I'd like to.
If you could fill the screen if you like. Yeah, that's good.
Any further discussion? Mr. Deeters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
The next case is 4056 Limerick Avenue. Mr. Kellums has directed staff to, you know, go out and if they do see tall grass, you know, we will enforce it. It's growing this time of season. So it's a tall grass, weeds, rubbish, couch in the front yard. Complaint initiated via Sycamore Township. Date of complaint was April 17th of '23. The owner occupied, it's a rental. Date of violation letter was sent on April 17th of '23. Date of last inspection was April 24th of '23. The owner's been unresponsive to the letter. With that, pictures, this is a picture of the couch that's out front. And you can see the tall grass around it.
Any idea how long the couch has been there?
I do not. I mean, the, it looks like Kevin initiated the complaint. Looking at the couch, it doesn't look super moldy, but certainly out there in the rain. With that...
It doesn't look upright either.
It does not.
It's like it's on its side.
Resolution, resolution providing for and authorizing removal of vegetation, garbage, refuse, and other debris and declaring nuisance for the property located at 4056 Limerick Avenue, Sycamore Township, Hamlet County, Ohio 45236.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Deeters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
The last one I have this evening is at 7294 Chetford. Type of violation, tall grass and weeds. Complaint initiated was by Sycamore Township Kevin Clark. Date of complaint, April 13th of '23. The occupancy type has been vacant. It was a rental. Date of violation was sent April 14th of '23. Date of last inspection was the 25th of April. The owner tenant has been unresponsive to any contact. And with that, on this Chetford property, you can see tall weeds and properties generally been not kept up.
Is anybody living there?
Currently, it's vacant. And...
Who's the owner in town?
I don't know. This is on one of our properties that will need perhaps some, need to go to court with eventually.
Have we cited this one before? I don't remember seeing this. Okay.
I think we have in the past. It's a chronic property.
This is a property maintenance issue when also garage doors falling off. Nothing's been done to this property in months and months.
With that, resolution providing for and authorizing removal of vegetation, garbage, refuse, and other debris and declaring a nuisance for the property located at 7294 Chetford, Sycamore Township, Ohio 45236.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Deeters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Jeff, the property at the corner of Fourth and Park, I mean, this guy's really a frequent flyer for us. I was by that yesterday. It looks like a war zone. We've got to do something. Are we litigation with him?
I believe that is on our backlog of properties. Currently, our zoning property maintenance code seeks a civil remedy. There has been some internal talk with staff, working with Tracy and perhaps making the penalty criminal, which would bring us into a, Hammond County has a housing court. And so the potential goal maybe for later in May or early June is to perhaps bring forward maybe a code change that would allow for criminal prosecution, not to punish or it's to get them before Judge Bouchard in the housing court, which is specifically geared for housing issues. The goal of that court is to clean up the property, not to punish, but to clean up the property. And the goal would be to get the property like that into that court.
I can tell you, I've never seen that property cleaned.
This is the one where it's all piled up in the driveway, isn't it?
Yeah, it's everywhere.
Yeah, this one's bad. We've talked to Matt from, and Larry about this both. So we are taking action on this. It's just we can't get it into Bouchard's court anymore on a civil offense. They don't do that anymore.
So what do we need to do to change that?
We're making our resolutions. And I think that's pretty much done. It just needs to be done into the board.
Okay, perfect. Okay. I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Lieutenant Tarr, Sheriff's report.
Unless anyone has any questions, I don't have anything specific tonight.
Chief, EMS and fire.
We had part...
Sorry, actually, I do have a question. This is something Tracy and I had texted back and forth about the other day. We had Metro in here recently making a presentation to us about things. And Mr. Weedman had noted that he sees them leaving buses parked on Montgomery Road sometimes. I saw it myself on Sunday in the middle of the hailstorm too. The driver parked in front of the Shell station next to the Arby's on Montgomery Road in the lane. There's no parking there. And disappeared into the Shell station for a little while to use the bathroom or something, I suppose. But I don't know if that's something we can ticket over or perhaps gently encourage them first, but they're blocking traffic by leaving a bus in a lane of travel. And can we do anything about that?
Metro has indicated that that is not acceptable policy for them, that they are not to stop until there's a pull off or curb lane.
Yeah.
You don't have the luxury of that.
Yeah, I sent Tracy a photo of it and then I saw the driver come walking back out a few minutes later. And I asked him, everything okay with the bus? Oh, yeah, I just needed to go to the bathroom.
I talked to Lieutenant Tarr about this. We have been in conversation about that.
Okay.
Trying to get a hold of ODOT also because it's going to take some help from them.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Chief, EMS and fire report.
We had the part-time fire inspector start last Thursday and Friday. Was this two days working? Thursday was more of an administrative day, getting him set up on the computers and the programs and everything. And then Friday went out and got 18 inspections done on Friday. So he's moving along. So it's really a well, well thought out thing that we did adding somebody on like that. So I think, I think it'll go real well. He's actually the one that found the Marathon gas station issue down there during his inspections. Jewish hospital is, they're really hurting for nurses. We really had some problems there over the weekend. We took a guy there and they had, he sat on our cot for 50 minutes waiting for a bed. And the nurse said they got 30 patients in the, out in the waiting room. There's only three nurses working. So it's, they're really having some problems down there. Hopefully they get it resolved.
I know that they had actually contracted with the, you know, traveling nurses. And at one point in time, they were paying $150 an hour to the traveling nurses. I think when I had, I met with the president in May, excuse me, in February, I think he said they were down to closer to 100.
Wow.
But it's a lot of dough.
It is.
Chief, is that a problem that we're seeing at other area hospitals also?
No, no. The other hospitals have been doing fine. I was even up at Atrium Medical Center today and they said, we're fine. We're in good shape. So I don't know what the, what's going on down there, but...
They don't divert at a certain point when they reach that?
They do, but not everybody does that. And in the walk-ins, they don't know anything about it. So that's all.
That's all it means about the inspections. That will certainly help clear our backlog.
Doing good.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief? Roads Maintenance and Recreation Report, Mr. Rudolph.
Okay. Couple of months ago, we submitted our recycling numbers to Hamilton County. And I received those results back. Would just like to share those with everybody. Says, congratulations, Sycamore Township residents. In 2022, we diverted 1,406 tons of material from going to landfill. Residents saved resources, conserved energy, and reduced polluting, pollution by recycling. Recycling efforts in Sycamore Township conserved enough energy to power every home in Sycamore Township for four days, reduced more air pollution than if every household in Sycamore Township rode their bicycle to work for four weeks, saved 5,239 trees from being harvested. And with those efforts, our diversion rate to landfill was 18.02%, which is about on average is past years. And with that, we received $17,152.80 for our general fund.
Wow.
So it does pay to recycle.
How do we compare to everybody else that they say?
We're usually at the top. They did not tell us.
We'll get that report later. That always comes a little later. We're top township three years running.
That's great.
Is that a plaque or something?
Yes, we do.
There are several of them.
I remember that one.
In the drawer.
No, I think it's permanently displayed in the office.
And sticking with the statistics, I have some early statistics from our trash bash I'd like to share. 30-yard roll-off dumpsters that we use to fill up, we filled up 24 up north trash bash and 33 at our south trash bash. 350 tires.
Wow.
450 gallons of oil, nine Gaylords of e-waste, and the document shredding day produced 18,250 pounds of paper was shredded.
They were rocking that day.
Yeah.
Wow.
So those are just some early numbers.
Popular programs indeed.
Yes. Parks and Rec report. Parks Maintenance Department has been busy mowing, mulching our parks and green spaces and maintaining, preparing our sports fields for play this spring. Want to comment, give compliments to our maintenance crew. I think our facility grounds are looking real good. Parks are looking great. All this rain's helping with the grass. Look nice and green. Couple of events I'd like to mention are the Pollinator Seminar and Plant Sales at Beckhold on Saturday, May 6th, 9:00 a.m. to noon, and our ever popular Spring Compost Giveaway at Hartzell United Methodist Church on Saturday, May 13th, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Last but not least will be our roads report in preparation of our road program coming up this summer. The maintenance department has been busy in neighborhoods performing tasks such as catch basin repairs, pavement repairs, and spot curb repairs. I think they're back on Kemper and all, back in that subdivision the past week. We have over 30 catch basins that we're going to be rebuilding, so we need to get all that work done before our road program kicks off late May, early June. That's all I have.
I know this is a busy time of year. Crews are out working hard.
Yeah.
Sun up to sundown. A lot, a lot of work, that's for sure.
Yep. They're doing a great job.
I have a few questions if I can. If you think, Steve, thanks for the report. Thanks to the maintenance crew for all they did. It's trash bash too. I know that's a lot of work too.
They work hard, yeah.
Yeah. Festival, I saw we have about $9,000 in additional donation or sponsorships, it looks like, and one vendor on the report that John will be giving this later. So that's great. How are we doing overall with donations for that?
I have not heard on lately.
$22,000, all right, very good. Moving on now.
That's good.
Okay. And something, I know Tracy, you had a discussion earlier with a business owner near the mall about this and he brought it up to me too. There are the nice new road signs deployed out here on Kenwood Road around the mall and every road that are very bright and visible. There's not one at Orchard yet like there is at American Way and Happiness and so forth, but I understand there's one in the works, I guess, for Orchard.
Yeah. And you can kind of blame, I'll take the blame on that. I helped prepare those, that contract. And I brought it up to Tracy and I, I mentioned to Tracy, I said, you know, what do you want to do about Orchard? My opinion is with this study out, maybe we should just hold off, see how it develops. And, you know, we can always add something in the future. And that's kind of the direction it went. But in the meantime, we have solicited a proposal to do that intersection. So hope to get that soon.
Okay. Do we have a timetable for that, do you know?
Unfortunately, we're getting into their busy season with these contractors. So once we get the proposal, obviously I'm, we'll have to, if we're going to proceed with it, Mr. Collins would present it to you guys.
Because you average about 20,000 intersections, so we thought it was prudent not to put it up there, not knowing what the traffic study was going to say.
Which I agree with. I think it made a lot of sense.
Yeah. Yeah.
Quite a number of those, those existing signs that are, that are out there now. Part of, part of the overall, yeah, well, they're part of the overall road rehab programs, if I recall.
And development as well.
Yeah.
And they do look good there in the mall area too. And the one at Orchard, I think too, though, maybe that'll give a little more distinctiveness to the intersection as people pass under it when the light turns red. Maybe they'll actually stop if they notice there's a giant road sign to puff them.
Oh, they stop. They stop.
Well, those lights are hard to see.
People definitely stop.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that's, that's.
Okay, I'll go into the works. Thanks.
Okay. Law Director report.
Nothing from the law director's office.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Administrator report, Mr. Collins.
First thing I have is like to talk about the Snyder Road Bridge signage. You know, we've talked about this quite a few times. I brought it to you before you asked for a rendering. I talked to the engineers. They could not get us a rendering, they said. But what we did, I did find out is that, you know, the fabric and the fencing is black, just like what would have been up there. It's just that it's going to be standard fencing poles instead of decorative. The decorative fence would have also had black fabric on it, which is what this is going to have. So, you know, the, the original rendition of what we saw, the signage is still what it'll look like. It's just not going to be on decorative poles. So, you know, we, we have to just finally make a decision. ODOT's ready to move on this. As I said last time, the township cost, if we want to participate in that, is $81,036.29, which is a far cry from the, you know, the 250 that we had talked about with the, with the decorative fencing. You know, we originally talked about going as high as 150, but that was with the fencing. So this is just for the logo and placement, traffic control. Everything has to be done for that to be put up. But it is a total of $81,036.29. You know, the bridge, the fence on our side of the bridge will be 12 foot. That's already standard because there is a sidewalk on our side of the bridge. The fencing on the Sims side of the bridge, if you would, is going to be eight foot tall. So ODOT has contacted me and I know Sims is meeting on that tonight also, you know, because I'd mentioned to you last time Sims has had, they would like to put it on both sides if we don't put it on one side. So just a couple of decisions that we need to talk about tonight to get this going one way or the other.
Tracy, if I may, the Cooper Road Bridge over 71 is being simultaneously replaced and they, they're putting up that fencing now. So if the board had to look at the fencing, that, that fence, that black fencing is just going up. If you needed to go in person and visualize it over Cooper, or Cooper over 71.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into a contract for, for the Sycamore Township ID sign on the Snyder Road overpass at the cost of $81,036. Like to use TIF funds for that. And I would also like to have that placed on the, on the south side, so on the 12-foot side.
On the Sycamore Township side.
Correct. Correct.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
So the pricing they gave you for 81, was that for the 12-foot south side or was that for the other side, which was smaller? I'm confused.
So the total price is 162,072.57. That's, that's split in half. So it's that much. We're not paying really for the fencing. We're paying for the logo and the installation. That's how much it costs us and how much it'll cost Sims.
It's 50% of the total.
So given the, the two different sizes of the fence, 12-foot tall fence and 80-foot tall fence, I'm making an assumption, I don't like to do that, but I'd like to at least be able to confirm that just from an aesthetic standpoint, that these letters are of the same scale. You know, granted, the typefaces will be different, you know, would be different. You know, Sims has their logos, Sycamore Township would have their logo, but I think it's important that they're of the same scale, that the S's are of the same height. Everything about font size. You don't want a 14-point font and a 10-point font. I think if we could try and ensure that there's some consistency as far as scale and size, even though the one fence is going to be taller because of the sidewalk necessarily, I think it's probably important that from an aesthetic standpoint that we at least understand what we're getting. And that, you know, it would be my preference that they would be consistent in scale, but I think it's important for us to understand what they're thinking from a signage perspective as well.
We, we do have in our land use plan, we do have dedication to, to Township ID. And this is a great opportunity, I think, to, to, to get into that, to get some Township ID out there at a considerably less of a price than we originally talked about, which was up to a quarter of a million dollars. There may be an argument from, from, from Sims that, hey, you know, you're, when you pass under a Sycamore sign, you're going into Sims. This really isn't directional, it's total ID because there's no, there's no exits, no exits at that location anyway, so it doesn't really matter. So I think it'd be, it would be better for us to have it on the 12-foot side.
I think it's an important, it's an important opportunity to give a nod to particularly that, that Northern Business District. You know, we talk so much about the Keller Business District, but we have a quite significant Northern Business District as well. But I think, you know, as folks are traveling up and down 71, that they know that there's a significant, significant presence in Sycamore Township in the northern part of the township. This is an opportunity to do that and certainly give a nod to that, that Northern Business District as well, even though you can't, you're not digging off the exit to get to it, you know that you are, you are looking at a significant business representation in Sycamore Township in the northern part of the district.
And these are TIF dollars, they're not general fund dollars. So we generate our, our TIF funds from, from our businesses. So it's only prudent to, to consider putting some, mixing some investment back in that, using those dollars back to help promote the, the business districts as well.
And I'm happy to see the money will come out of TIF funds, but you all know my position on this. I think any sign on highway bridges like that is an extravagant waste of money that at least suggests to taxpayers that we've got money to burn. And I, I don't think it's a good idea. It's basically a, you're now leaving Sycamore sign where it's placed. I'd rather see, rather see us put identity things in places within the township where you're coming into the township to where those businesses are, which might not be on the interstate in that part of the township, but might be on other surface streets where it could be done on a smaller scale and that money spread around to multiple signs. So I just, I don't think it's a good use of our tax dollars there, especially as you're leaving the township, going into Sims from there. That's just going to confuse people. If it were on the other side, on the other hand, you're entering the township, but then you've got to leave it to come back to the surface streets there. And there's one of those big overhead light-up traffic management signs just before it as you're heading south. So now I guess the Sims sign will be on that side blocked by that instead of ours. But I, I just think it's, it's a waste of money. So I'm, I'm opposed to it.
Katie, let me ask you a quick question. With this being a bridge where the two sides are on different, in different municipalities, can we put it on the south side? We would be spending money for it to be in Sims.
I mean, I don't think you could do that. Something that may be different with TIF funds, that's something I'd look into, but just.
South side is our side.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
The north.
I'm referring to going south, yes, so the north side, on the south side. Yeah. For southbound traffic.
Correct. The motion was to put it on the northbound side, on the south part of the bridge, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Which is the Sycamore Township side.
The 12-foot Sycamore side.
Yeah.
Again, to Mr. James' point, this is not directional. This is merely ID. And so for it to be, I don't think people will be confused whether they're in Sycamore and leaving Sycamore underneath the sign or going the other way. I'm not sure that you'll find any, anybody that will be confused by the fact that, oh, I think I just left Sycamore. Why is that sign on that side of the road and not on the other side? And frankly, I agree with Tracy that I think, I don't think we can spend the money in Sims as well, so.
I have heard that previously. Actually, he said we could spend TIF money outside of the township to promote the township just for future reference. But, yeah, so.
Any additional discussion? Mr. Peters.
Mr. James.
No.
Ms. Swigman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Okay. Next I have a, we received a, our Happiness Way traffic study, if you remember right. I ordered a traffic study for Happiness Way because we were getting a lot of complaints of cut-through traffic. We had talked about this where after the Road Happiness Way was closed for construction and we were going to open it back up. And so we, we had a traffic study done. We will, we, those just came in today, so we will post that on our website. But basically it says there is no cut-through traffic and there is not a speeding problem. So the 85% speed was 29 on one of the roads, 30 on the other, which means 85% of the traffic is going that or less. So, and talking to the engineers, they, they don't even talk about changing that unless it's, you know, closer to nine miles per hour. 85% is usually what your speed limit is based on. But the, the numbers were really rather small as to the amount of traffic going through there. So there really is minimal, if any, cut-through traffic. It's very conducive to the amount of homes back in there and most of it was from over the Orchard Lane area. No cut-through. So I was happy to hear that. But we will post that on, on our website.
I think that was probably a perception of that early on after the apartments opened because there probably was cut-through of moving trucks and others that had a turnaround traffic that probably slowed a lot.
Well, I think a lot of the perception also was that you had somebody moving on the corner house that moved in when the road was closed.
Yeah.
So they didn't know what it was like when it was open. People have always come up and down through there, the people that live back in there. So I think once it was open, it was a little shock to them because it had been closed for the whole time, you know, for what, a year or whatever it was. So I was glad to see those numbers, that there's not the problem that we thought there was.
No, I'm glad we were responsive. I'm glad we did the study and, and we have something concrete to, to share with the neighborhood. I'm glad we were responsive and executed that. So, thank you.
So one other thing I have, as two of the trustees here are well aware of, Duke is in Heightmire today and they will be there again tomorrow, removing foliage and problem trees. This, they will be back later on to do more. It's going to be very extensive, but I know there was a planned power outage. We tried to communicate that to as many people as we can. I know it was on Facebook in the neighborhood. We had it on our website. We also had notices sent by Duke to people. I think some got emails. As far as I know, we did not receive any phone calls today, so I would say Duke probably did a pretty good job getting that word out.
They did door hangers for any doors, I think. So they, they did do a good job of getting it out.
Good, good. And I know they'll be back tomorrow also, so. Because originally they were talking about a, you know, 11, 12, 13-hour outage and it's like, we can't do that in one day. So they broke that into two days. So they will be back tomorrow. But it's just good to see Duke's in there. They're keeping their word to us that they would be on top of this and, and take this seriously. So it's, it's good to see. So the only other thing I have is purchase orders over $5,000. The first one is PO 23-64-1. This is a blanket in the amount of $5,000 for fire bunker gear. This is coming out of the Fire Department Fund. 23-120, US Bank, an amount of $211,187.50. This is tax increment revenue note, series 2022. This is when the refinance of the maintenance building in back. PO 23-121, Choice One Engineering, in the amount of $28,340. This is right-of-way for Kemper Road sidewalks. This is an addition. There was no right-of-way because a lot of the engineering wasn't done. We weren't sure how much right-of-way we would need in order to do that project. 23-122, US Bank, in the amount of $51,462.50. This is for series 2014 Tri-Health Infrastructure Bond Payments. 23-123, also the US Bank, $114,950. This is for 2016 Various Purpose Refunding Bonds Payments. This is Redstone, some of Deerfield Park and Station 93. 23-125, CDW Government Incorporated, $9,102.04. This is for Brother Pocket Jet Printer Sheriff's Vehicles. I believe we talked about this before. This is, the sheriff's vehicles will now be printing tickets on the spot. So that is for them to be added to the vehicles. 23-126 is a blanket for $20,000 for festival and Sycamore expenses. This is for miscellaneous expenses that we always have every year. 23-127-1, US Bank National Association, in the amount of $758,275.51. But there's a balance to the Port Authority. This is a pass-through for Kenwood Town Place. The schools have been paid and the rest is a pass-through to the Port Authority. 23-128, River City Entertainment. Twenty-three dash one-twenty-eight, River City Entertainment LLC, twenty-one-thousand-five-hundred. This is for the sounds and the lights for this Festival and Sycamore this year. Twenty-three dash one-twenty-nine, Caffernberger Truck Equipment Company. This is for eleven-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-nine dollars, this is for a hydraulic tailgate spreader. This is something that the Maintenance Department used for Birmingham Roads. The one that we had had finally broke down, it was, it was an old salt spreader that had been converted over, and it just was out of life. Twenty-three dash one-thirty, E-PAC Manufacturing, six-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety dollars. This is for a twelve-yard heavy-duty roll-off container. This is for our swap loader, this is what we deliver to houses for weekends for trash pickups.
Tracy, I think you might have missed twenty-three dash sixty-six dash three, blanket vendor, fire vehicles, eight thousand dollars.
Okay, I did miss that because it's not on that list. Unless I have a new list here.
Do you want my list?
Yes, please. Okay, twenty-three dash sixty-six dash three, blanket vendors, eight thousand dollars for fire vehicles. That's for maintenance.
Motion to approve the aforementioned POs.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just a question about these printers. Those are expensive printers for tickets. What's happening now with tickets and how many are we writing and what revenues are we bringing in?
So, I don't have those numbers. Essentially, Hamlin County is moving to an e-citation system. So instead of us giving you a ticket and then drive the ticket over to headquarters, gets over to headquarters a couple of days later, gets driven down to the clerk of courts and then eventually entered in the system, you get on the docket, the process can take up to a week, ten days. This will essentially e-file these tickets with the clerk of courts, it just speeds everything up. If you are issued a citation tonight, you could go online and pay it that night. So it just, it speeds up everything for everybody. The entire, we are piloting this with CPD, I believe, and a couple of other agencies, but Hamilton County is moving to the e-citation, the clerk of courts is. So it's just, we are the only county in the state of Ohio that does not have an e-citation system. So we're catching up with the times.
Very good, thank you.
By the way, is that for one printer or is that for?
That is for.
A printer per vehicle?
That is a printer per vehicle.
Okay. Nice guess, nine thousand in multiple units.
Two thousand each.
Anyone staying on those vehicles, yeah.
And those can be moved from vehicle to vehicle when, when getting ones.
Yeah, they're kind, they, it's like an armrest type printer, so it would move with everything to the next car.
Thank you. We got a motion, we have a second, any additional discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Dieters, Fiscal Officer Report.
Yes, we had cash receipts of one-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. Disbursements of one-million-eight-hundred-and-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and fourteen cents. A complete listing of the cash receipts and disbursements is available on the page.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Trustee comments?
Yeah, I have a few. Last week, we spent, we had a three-hour meeting with the sheriff and all of the captains in their different disciplines, talking about some of the technology, and we just talked about it again tonight with the e-citations as well. Talking about the, where the sheriff's department is going as it relates to technology, and it was really a super meeting with the sheriff and all the, I know Mike was there as well. The Snyder Road Bridge, I took a ride out there today, it's coming along great. The Lucky Office Development is, they're moving a lot of dirt at the Lucky Office Development on Kemper Road. Also, the kids' first addition, they're moving dirt there as well. A shout-out to Steve and his crew, the catch basin work, those guys are really hustling. They're doing a great job. I drove by the other day and all I could see was a head coming out of that, it was all the way down in that thing. I guess you're re-bricking them?
Yeah, a lot of block and a lot of mortar.
Yeah, yeah, they're really doing a great job. And I want to say that the facilities all look a super, so shout-out to your crew, they're doing a great job. Okay, I don't have anything else.
Ditto to all that, basically, yeah. Thanks to all of our staff, maintenance, and everyone else for all that they're doing. And thanks to Duke for the work they're doing in our neighborhood, after all it took to make that happen. Progress.
Alright, additional announcements. National Day of Prayer is this Thursday, May 4th, at 12:00 noon here at the Township Administration Building. In the front parking lot, weather permitting, if it's rainy, we will go inside the firehouse. So, we welcome and encourage any residents that would like to join that, that annual event. It's a terrific event, and hope to see, see residents there. Mr. Rudelshofer already mentioned the Pollinator Seminar and Plant Sale scheduled for this weekend. And he also mentioned the Compost Giveaway coming up the following weekend. So those are two popular events, please put them on your calendar. A couple of meetings are canceled, the Zoning Commission meeting on May 8th has been canceled, and the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting on Monday, May 15th has been canceled. For all other scheduled meetings and events, we encourage you to see the published calendar on our website. With that, I would like to move to adjourn into executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22 G1, to consider the employment and compensation of a public employee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Roll call.
You have to do a roll call, aye, we'll do a roll call.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is 7:46 p.m., we are going to adjourn, we will return when the meeting is over.